Time. Well, I'm gonna turn this part over to the city manager so he can make the presentation for tonight that we'll be having.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Back in May, and I won't do much of an introduction here because I don't want to steal Dr. Krill's thunder, but back in May, we were contacted by Dr. Nicholas Krill, the director of the Georgia College and State University's Center for Innovation about participating with them in a grant proposal for solar technologies and eco-entrepreneurship. That proposal was submitted with the support of the city and was funded by the Partnership for Inclusive Innovation. You all have as part of the agenda tonight to approve a resolution authorizing that agreement with Georgia College and State University for this partnership, and I wanted Dr. Krill to come and give you all more information about that. Just kind of a quick Cliff Notes of the grant proposal to let you all know the specifics and the facts about that, not only as we look towards authorizing this agreement, but just simply so you can know what's coming down the pipeline in terms of this program, and we will be getting updates from him throughout the time period of the program. So, Dr. Krill, if you'll come up and share that information with us, we appreciate you being here with us tonight.
Yeah, so one of the things I can also do is help answer questions at the end, because I'm gonna try to keep it brief. So, one of the main elements of this, as you've mentioned, is we've got a $100,000 grant at the university to try to create a program that's gonna really help with entrepreneurship and help with kind of workforce development angle too as well. So, with that, one of the things we've done is paired with a professor of physics who can teach people how to put together solar powered systems, but actually how to put the two wires together, but don't electrocute yourself in the process. We're getting some certifications as well for the national standards and getting it legitimate as possible to really just kind of let people know that it's a get involved in this, it's gonna be something that employers in the sector are gonna see, recognize, and it ought to in most cases help people increase earnings potential. So, thanks to the grant, there won't be any tuition associated with any of this. Everybody who wants to can be able to participate. If we have our cut overrunning with potential participants, we do plan to go ahead and offer it first to those with economic disadvantages. So, that would be the only sort of discriminatory process we might have at any point in time. So, we would have a little question at the application phase asking income, or type of search line, so we can preference people on the lower end with the idea that they get to build up their economic potential this way. We'll be running classes from January to about July is the current timeframe. We'll have four cohorts with 10 students each. One of the things we're also adding into this is we're not just gonna make it about how to put the solar panel systems together. The term, I think we're trying to make happen, I doubt it has to be eco-entrepreneurship, but entrepreneurship in the environmental sector. We're also gonna be adding that to this, is we want to try to just give students a crash course in how you actually start business in this sector, particularly with things like solar panel and wind. There's a lot of federal government regulatory credit systems. We really just wanna walk people through, how do you navigate this? So, if you do want to start your own business, you're familiar with that sort of a process, as well as just some of the more banal things like how to go to the Secretary of State's website and start your own corporate agency. But really kind of the bare bones, like a three-day crash course in how to start a business, we can tack on to the more, I guess, technical education element. So, while we're doing this, some of the things we'll be studying are like, you know, attitude impacts, does it change how people feel about solar? We also want a more macroeconomic view. What does this do for a city? Because this ultimately is being funded by the Partnership for Inclusive Innovation, $100,000. We want to see though, if we see cities themselves start investing in these programs, what's that kind of long-term return on your investment on this? We want to kind of study that, as well as looking at the impact that any new businesses are created, whether they be in solar or not, the students will have that education, so it's something they can do. Really, that's the main gist of it. The last, I guess, the biggest piece of cake for the city on all of this is part of it has, we want to get them some hands-on training, not just in the classroom. We want to actually make them put wires together, and so part of it is gonna be putting about $16,000, $17,000 worth of equipment on any building or any place the city wants us to. So, that's how we are going to get you guys in. So, whether it's an existing product or existing place, you already wanted to put solar, we can add on to it and help with that, or if it's a brand-new spot, if you want to go ahead and put it on, you should be able to do that. And if nothing else, get your energy bills a bit. So, with that, I guess, are there any questions?
We don't know yet the building. I've had some conversations with Robert about the possibility of seeing, about putting this at the water treatment plant to go along with some of the green energy that we're looking at in terms of some of the new filter medium that would be used in the rehab of the water plant. So, there are kind of a couple of things working together that may end up being able to be meshed together that are kind of exciting, but we haven't gotten to the point in the program where we can actually start evaluating the potential buildings at this point in time to know if that's gonna be a possibility. But that's somewhere that we will be looking.
We don't need you to say exactly now, we have time. The ideal timeframe will be between May and July before we actually do the installation, so we have a lot of lead time to do that.
What other directions does the Center for Innovation have beyond that with the interaction with the students or within the business department?
I'll be running the business education side of it, so the entrepreneurship side will be run by myself. I'll also be running the, as the principal investigator in the study, I'll be running all the economic impact studies. As well, one of the other things we're trying to do is basically turn Villageville into the blueprint for other places want to start doing this, this is how you can do it. This is how much it's gonna cost, this is how much your city can expect to get back. So, that way you can take something, you know, thinking as a local scientist as I am, if you want to take it to the actual government officials and show them, here are the numbers, here's what you can get out of it for your bank, for your buck over time. That's something we also very much want to put together, and that's gonna be aligned by this one.
Excited to see how it goes.
It's something we really, the grant's gonna kick-start it and get it started. We are already looking for a few other avenues for getting new funding. There's a program the state as a whole is going in on by the Director of Sustainability in Savannah, our $250 million grant, which would cover the entire state. So, there's definitely avenues we're looking to grow this. We're hoping this is just the start of a long-term investment, because the thing that really kicked us off was the closest in-person education for this type of, this training is three and a half hours to the north. So, we're in a desert. We're in a desert for good in-person education for this kind of stuff. If you want any kind of thing to be in-person, it's how not to electrocute yourself. And with all the, again, with all the federal money that's flowing out there, like it or hate it, it's there. Let's get a piece of the pie for us, Georgia.
Yeah, I agree.
That, I agree.
It's that part, it's that part to the north, I would think there's not much to the south, so.
Nope, it's a very slim, it's slim pickings if you want to get something like this done for in-person education, so I think we can do a really good job of it.
I know one of the things that, in a class that I took with the Georgia Municipal Association, they talked about ways to be able to do that for smaller cities, I mean, much smaller than Milledgeville, that, you know, have problems and would like to get involved and, you know, provide an electricity for, you know, for the smaller communities where they have to reach out and to larger companies to see if they can get them in. So, this would be, and like he said, further south, further south. So, that would be a great thing for, you know, you to get involved in and us be able to say together that we worked and, you know, we worked and got this done.
It's, the study has literally got Milledgeville on the title, so hopefully we can keep it looking.
Wow, okay.
And this coursework, this will be offered as a class for currently enrolled students? Or is this an opportunity for anyone?
Anyone in the community will actually be referencing non-students for nothing else. Again, our students, it's not really a secret, and come from upper-middle-class families. This is more about workforce development for the economic disadvantage. So, again, if we have an open seat, a student can take it, but that's gonna be more of a last, last second kind of filler at that point. We really want to focus on the community that's here for the long-term, who can embed themselves that are here already.
That's good to hear.
What is the cost of attending the course?
$0. It will not cost anybody anything, we have used the grant funding to cover everything. If we had to go for a pay model, most classes of this variety cost between $1,000 and $1,500 for an online version of it, $1,500 to about $2,500 for an in-person version of this. So, it's gonna be a pretty good value. The only educational requirement is we are gonna start with a high school or a GED equivalent, if you have that. And I think we'll also build in in case we need to have the numbers, just some sort of a basic test. If you don't have that, we can still find some way to take the bits off.
That's great, we look forward to hearing more about it.
You answered one of my questions, I was gonna ask what the requirement. How do you plan to get the information out to the disadvantaged?
Yeah, so part of the grant we have with the Center of Continuing Professional Education will handle the marketing of it. So, we've already started working with the likes of Bald and Bolisant, we've had a few other media pits and local news where we put it out there. I've already got about eight or nine participants who want to sign up for the first cohort of 10. So, I think we'll be able to make it, you know, make it known to the rest of the community, but the media will definitely be a part of it. Then something as well the city, anything we can do to put more publicity out there, we'll absolutely welcome.
Will you let us know when you start? Well, you say you already have some, but about your application or send us an application that we can possibly get out to people in the community that we may know that would have people interested?
Our registration will be in November. We'll have the actual, so right now I've just gotten people on putting in an email inbox, keeping it, telling it, you know, hold tight. But absolutely, we'll do that. And as part of this too, once a month, the last Friday of every month, I and your city manager will have to meet with Partnership of Inclusive Innovation, just to make sure we're not, you know, taking the money and throwing it off the backside. We're making progress on the goals of this. So, you will be afraid to pretty much understep a lot of regular intervals. It may be easy to keep the city updated.
Well, you have to watch the city manager.
And how long will the class last?
It is a 48-hour total class. We are gonna have multiple modalities, so some will be Saturday only, so it will be six straight Saturdays in a row, and some will be Monday through Friday, 5:30 to 8:30 p.m.
So, they have that option?
Yeah, so you'll be able to pick and choose what works best for your schedule. So, that'll be part of the cohort model, we have this multiple different offerings.
That's pretty good. Excellent. I like it. Thank you, Dr. Krill. Go do well, be great.
Thank you.
Do you want me to continue on with my report, Mayor? Okay. If you all can remember way back before COVID, one of the things we talked about was giving you all the opportunity to meet new hires for the city. And, you know, COVID's not gone, but it's settled down enough where we're all kind of getting back to our normal way of life. And so, tonight, I will be starting as part of my report, once a quarter, of introducing to you the new hires for the city from the previous quarter. So, tonight, we have those that have been hired by the city of Milledgeville and some rehired by the city of Milledgeville. They saw that wonderful new salary scale y'all put together, and they became interested in coming back. If they're rehire, they have to meet with me first, and we have a conversation about that. And, but not a bad one, just a conversation with them. So, we're happy to get them back. The ones that we have gotten back were ones that we hated to lose to start with, and we are happy that we're able to do that. So, I'm gonna introduce them, have them stand. Guys, you all are welcome to share anything with Mayor and council that you want to, or you can just simply say hello, whichever one you want to do, I'm gonna leave that totally up to you. But in water maintenance, we have Kenneth Bonner. In water maintenance, or as I call it, utility maintenance, that's where Kenneth is as well. We have Joshua Stagner. Better known as Tiny. I'm not joking about that. First time Kevin ever said something about Tiny, and then I went out on the work site with Tiny, I went, where's Tiny? Tiny's the one that pulled me out of the hole over at Central State Prison tonight that I fell in it. So, I appreciate Tiny being there at 2:30 a.m. with all the rest of us to pull me out of that hole. With Public Works and the Street Department, if he's here, James Jackson. Yeah, there he is. From Public Works and our Stormwater Utility, Jaques Renfro. From Public Works and our Cemetery and Parks area, Jerry Webb. From Waste Water Treatment, Terrence Wilson. I didn't see Terrence. Give him my hand anyway. And from Yard Trimming and Collections Public Works, Frank Wright. Frank, get here. We are happy that those folks are back with the city. We will introduce you to the October through December hires at our first meeting in January, and we'll do that quarterly in the future so that you all have the opportunity to meet those folks. The things that you have before you tonight, let me go over those very quickly and then bring you up to date on a couple of other things that I shared with you, either in my weekly report last week or when I reported to you in my report at our council meeting two weeks ago. You have ordinance O23-10-13 before you tonight, which is the first reading of an ordinance to add a social media and media relations policy to the personnel policies and procedures. We already have, as you know, a computer, internet, and email use policy, but we needed to add social media to that because that's getting to be, obviously, that's something that's utilized by a lot of folks in our society now. And I felt like that was just a good place as well to add media relations information, to get a policy written about who could and could not talk to the media, and give the media some direction about how to contact the spokespersons for the city, as well as to give the media some expectation about when we would be getting back with them and answering their questions and setting up appointments for interviews and those kinds of things. So, I'm excited about the document that you have before you. This is the first reading of two readings, so you all got it in my weekly report to you last Friday initially. Please read through it, let me know any changes you'd like to make. We'll bring those to you in the second read on October 24th and hopefully put that in our personnel policy manual as a policy that we follow from here on out.
Hank, before you move on to your next item, is there a city that this was borrowed from or duplicated from?
About three. Yeah, the go-bys, as the city attorney and I call them, came from three different cities.
Which cities were those?
City of Gainesville, City of Albany, and the City of St. Petersburg, Florida. And I read a bunch of them, and those are the three that came to the top of the list in terms of me using information from those to put them together, as well as putting the local information in.
Thank you, Hank.
Any other questions about that at this point in time? All right, please, please let me know any changes that you feel like we need to make, because we can certainly, we can certainly make those. Resolution R23-10-38 is a resolution to confirm Deep Roots as a community festival. When that is being discussed, we have some folks from Deep Roots here tonight to answer any questions that any of you have in terms of how the festival is going to be operated this year. It's much like it is last year, it was last year, but they can answer specific questions for you if you have them at that point in time. Resolution R23-10-39 is the resolution to authorize the agreement on the partnership that Dr. Krill just shared information with you about. And so, if you have any other questions about that when that time comes, we can discuss them then. I also shared with you in my weekly report to you last week some verbiage, draft verbiage, to go into a letter to the school system in response to their request on the redundant water supply that we've been discussing with them since about July. Please take a look at that draft language, and if you would, let me know if there's anything that you want to change. I would like to be able to send that letter out by the end of the week, and I would like to be able to put it on letterhead with Mayor, Council, and City Manager's names on the letterhead. So, I want to make sure that I run that by you, so since your name will be on the letterhead that it goes out under. So, let me know if there's any changes that you feel like we need to make. I've been contacted by a few of you about some parking issues for members of Trinity CME Church down on North Wilkinson Street. I couldn't figure out for the life of me why this had not been an issue for years, and all of a sudden it was an issue this year. And I met with Jonathan, John Jackson from Parking Services at George College, and when that section, when the parking spaces in the, in what would be the 300 block of North Wilkinson Street were restripped by the college, there was some communication with the previous city manager and then with me early on when I was in the interim role, that any parking spaces that the college was using in the right-of-way could not be used to generate revenue. So, because that was the case, when those spaces in the 300 block of North Wilkinson Street were restripped, as well as the spaces in the 300 block of North Liberty Street were restripped, they went to open parking as opposed to faculty parking. And the reason that was is because faculty have to pay for their parking spaces, and that would have been them generating revenue from the right-of-way for the city of Milledgeville. So, what that did was that made students begin to park there, and many of the students that are parking there are students that live in Bell Hall, which lost its parking spaces in the parking lot that they had in the 200 block of North Wilkinson Street with some work that the college did there. So, that was the reason there were cars parked there on the weekend when in previous years there had not been. So, John and I batted around a couple of ideas, and what I would like to see us do initially is we will put up signs on the parallel spaces on the east side of the 300 block of North Wilkinson saying that overnight parking is prohibited. And Georgia College will do the same thing on about five spaces closest to Thomas Street on the opposite side of North Wilkinson Street. And we think that will take care of the problem to have those spaces available and open on Sunday when church meets, as they have been in the past. We talked about some other issues that we may ultimately have to go to, but if it's okay with you all, I'd like to try these signs first and see if that takes care of our problems. We also, I'm also gonna get with Mr. Thomas and look at the possibility of maybe striping in front of the church for a loading and unloading zone. So, for those people who have difficulty walking, who may be coming to church with someone else, they can drop them off at the door and then go park somewhere and then come back and pick them up. Mr. Jackson has said that church members are more than welcome to park in the faculty lot behind Kilpatrick, because since it's a faculty lot, those spaces are open on Sunday morning like the ones on the street used to be. But he understands that that could still be a problem for those people who may have difficulty with mobility. So, if you all are good with that, let's try those signs and see if that takes care of our problem. The city will install those signs, and then if we need to move further with that in terms of regulation, we can talk about, talk about what that needs to be. Anybody have any comments or?
How many, how many parking spaces would that end up freeing with the signs?
I believe, I didn't get down there to count, but I looked back at some maps that I had drawn when we were looking at paved surface street parking. There are eight parallel spaces on the east side of North Wilkinson, and then if they put those signs up on the five closest to Thomas Street, that would make, what, 13 available for parking? And then, of course, as I said, the parking in the lot behind Kilpatrick is certainly available to them for those folks who do not have mobility issues. This kind of all goes along with the Montgomery Street piece too, that I'll add the rest of the story to in just a minute. But let me find out if any of you have any other comments about the Wilkinson Street piece first.
And that's weekend only?
It will, it will be, for the spaces that are there, the signs will just simply say, no overnight parking.
There's another head of concern also about when they're having their funerals and also when they're having choir practice, there's nowhere for them to park as well. Initially, when we talked about it, and I brought it to your attention, and I think, let me thank Ms. Matt too for stepping in and, as well as everybody with their concerns, to help us get to this point. I know funerals and, as Mr. said, funerals and then the choir practice piece. I think they have choir practice, what is it, right out the church, or Saturday before?
Saturday mornings.
Before church service.
That's what they were telling me, with Saturday morning. But I, and I just, I know when we, when we first talked about the new science building going up, that was one of our concerns was that, you know, they, every time the college has a new building, there's no plans for parking, and it ends up causing us a problem. And so, you know, as you talked with Mr. Jackson, to me, it is important now for them to look more and more towards providing some parking for their students and not taking all of ours, because, you know, just like the people that called me from Trinity, they all reminded us that they are taxpayers, and they have paid for this. And, you know, when you are, and they're elderly taxpayers, so they, one lady told me, I've been paying taxes a long time. So, when they remind you of that and the fact that everything is being provided for everybody else except for them, they've been members of that church and members of the community for a long time, they're concerned that we are losing our focus on what the citizens need too. So, they want us to always be aware of their needs as well as trying to work. So, I told her we would, we would do our best to work through it, but please keep that in mind for the college, because this, every year is getting to be, you know, we're dealing with that end, they're requesting additional on another end of downtown, and we're caught in the middle, and then we have to hear it from the businesses downtown as well. So, it's really a problem that could easily be addressed with some type of parking that the college provides.
Well, one of the things Mr. Jackson shared with me is they are working on an RFP now, on a parking study for the campus. And I told him before that RFP was issued to get back with me, because we may have some interest in partnering with them on that RFP and have whoever's looking at the parking information look at all of the parking downtown, as well as the parking around the college. So, prior to that RFP being issued, we will, we will have an opportunity to weigh in on that and see about the possibility of making the parking study downtown, as well as college-oriented, all the way around. I think you're exactly right, Michelle Osterman. And I think, I'm hoping maybe a study like that would give us some options that either they have not looked at or we had not thought about in the process. So, we'll, if everybody's good, we'll see how these signs work, and then if we need to go further, we will go further. But I think this may, this may take care of a large portion of the issue. Speaking of parking, I came to you, I guess about six weeks ago or so, and shared with you a letter that I'd gotten from Kathy Cox about the possibility of making the Montgomery Street control parking zone, four-hour parking as opposed to two. We talked about the fact that we may be able to make that work out along with looking at the possibility of doing some other things. along with looking at the possibility of doing some other things with parking citations in general downtown. I've communicated back with President Cox as well as Mr. Jackson and told him that we will continue to look at that. But we will not be making, taking action on that until such time as the Georgia College Police Department begins to run their citations through municipal court as opposed to county court. That if we were going to give up parking spaces and parking time on Montgomery Street, we, we needed to agree on something along the lines of those, of those citations go into municipal court. Mr. Jordan and I have had that conversation a number of times. Chief Swiker and I have had that conversation a number of times. President Cox was not aware that that's what was happening, so now she is. And when I talked, met with Mr. Jackson this morning, I shared with him, that's kind of what we're waiting on there. So, and I, and I did check with Chief Swiker to see if any citations had, had cycled through municipal court, and they have not yet. So until that point in time, Montgomery Street will continue to be two hour parking. Also, we will again be selling employee annual leave time. That's, that's a, a big piece of our means for retaining our employees. It's the same as it's always been. We will sell it back in November or buy it back in November and again in May with 80 hours being the maximum that can be sold back in a budget year. You see the form there that we've used in the past. And I just wanted you all to have a copy of that form to let you know that, that is our plans again in this budget year. If somebody buys 80 hours back in November, they can't buy any time back for the rest of the year. Like they can do 20 hours in November and, or 40 hours in November and then 40 hours in May or 60 hours in November and 20 hours in May. There, there's a combination of whatever they can do there. We build this into the budget in terms of personnel cost. And so Ms. Danzy has already shared with me that, that we can do this. And I, I think this is, especially at Christmas, it's a, it's a, it's a big way to, to help retain our employees is one of the benefits that they have the opportunity to participate in. Also, just remind you, at our meeting two weeks ago, you got information about open enrollment on insurance. For those of you that participated in the city's insurance, open enrollment is currently going on now and will go through October 31st. If you don't want to make any changes, there's no action needed on your part. But if you do want changes, you need to be in touch with the Human Resource Office no later than October 31st in order to get those changes made. Any changes you make during the open enrollment period will be effective January 1 of '24. If you need that information, again, let us know and we'll put another copy of that flyer in your box so you can have that information available to you. And Mayor, that's all I have.
All right.
Unless there are questions for me.
I'm just amazed.
Anybody on this end?
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. I figured after y'all had to spend most of the day with me yesterday, I'd cut you short today.
I'll call you on your link.
10 minutes to one, Ms. Shinholster.
All right, and there is no old business this evening, so we'll move to new business. And I will ask the clerk to please read ordinance O-2310-13 by caption.
An ordinance to amend the personnel policies and procedures to add a section entitled "Social Media and Media Relations."
All right, this is the first reading of this ordinance. It will come back to council for a second reading and the action at the November 14th meeting. I will ask the clerk to please read Resolution R-2310-38 by caption.
To reaffirm Deep Roots as a community festival sponsored by Main Street Downtown Development Authority to prevent public consumption of alcoholic beverages in open containers while upon public streets or recreation areas, to establish a control zone within the festival, to reaffirm the rules and rules designated by the Community Festival Ordinance.
All right, you have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Is there any way we can have someone to come up and tell us about?
True. I think Mr. Stens, Mr. Pendergrass back there would do like to step to the podium and give us some information about what will take place.
Frank Fendercast, 136 North Woods Drive, Milledgeville, Florida.
You know the drill.
Seen me before. How can I help you today?
Just tell us about it.
Well, it's been a while. This will be our 20th year that the city has sponsored this community event. Thank you very much. We, you know, we had a two-year hiatus during COVID. So last year was our first, you know, reintroducing the community to the event. We made some pretty significant changes during that period. You know, kind of rethink how we can make this event more inclusive and easier for people to attend. So we're gonna, we're gonna follow that same plan like we did last year. Whereas the, the daytime event is, there's no, there's no fee to come in. We also changed from a barbecue competition to a steak cookoff. That might not mean a lot to you guys, to them, but it means a lot to the city because we're no longer closing streets on Thursdays and, and having more staff and people working. We can do it all on one day. So it kind of, it's, and it also alleviated a lot of volunteer hours on, that we're receiving on our side.
So really it helped.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so, but in general, it's going to be the same event. We'll have, we've got 72 arts and crafts vendors. We've had to cap it. We, we have people still wanting to come and we just, we don't have a space. And then we've got our commercial corridor. We've got 16 spaces allocated for, for businesses that can participate that aren't arts and crafts. We've got the Antique Car Show as usual. We've got a much larger community stage with different acts that'll be going on starting at 10:00 AM and go until 5:00 or 6:00, go until 6:00. So 10:00 AM to 6:00, there'll be free entertainment on the north, on the end of North Wayne Street. We also are, we've, we used to use a food truck company out of Atlanta to help us kind of wrangle in food trucks to come in. We're no longer doing that. We're only gonna, we're, we're gonna manage it ourselves. And we're, we're trying to stay with local and regional food trucks. We have quite the variety of, of applications. Unfortunately, we don't have enough room to put them all in here. So we're gonna have to figure out a plan after this year to possibly rotate those spaces. So it's not always the same people that give other people an opportunity. We'll have to add a little bit of credentials into that because, you know, on what, it's nice to have a good food truck vendor because they don't, they're, they're clean, they're polite, they know what to do. And, and I, I get a little nervous if I haven't seen a truck before because I don't know what kind of a setup they're gonna have. So we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna do that. But we've got six good people that are, you know, regional and not coming from Atlanta so much. So we're excited about that. That'll be a little bit of a change. But the, the layout will be pretty much like we did last year.
And I'm glad that you say that because I had a little concern there. There were two people who had wanted to have a stand and they were told no. But you talked to them and I want to say thank you for doing that and you are giving them a chance. So I appreciate that.
Oh, sure, sure.
And they're local, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was, we, we, we listened, we heard, we, we heard. You know, people have to understand, we're all volunteers here and, you know, granted, we've been doing it a long time, but it's, it, it takes a lot of effort, it takes, it takes the village. And, but we are, we, we are trying to adapt. And that was a, I think that's a positive thing, just like you said. And, you know, fingers crossed, knock on wood, it's all gonna work out.
And it makes a difference when someone actually listens. You just don't say no, you actually, you listen, you know? So I greatly appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
And the afternoon, the evening entertainment, what time will that start and your?
Jimmy?
It starts at 6:30 and ends at 11:00.
And is that part is where the fee comes in?
So, so we've kind of sectioned that off because not everybody that, you know, our attendance ranges between 18,000 to 22,000 people. That's bigger than the population of the city of Milledgeville. And then the CBB actually has some very interesting numbers. They have been able to geolocate cell phone usage. And they said last year they had 30,000 individual hits, phone, phone pings. So whatever that means, maybe people walk around with two phones.
Multiple phones.
No, two phones. But, yeah, so, where was I going with that?
The tickets for the evening portion.
Tickets, yes, they're, they're, so the evening event is gonna be same area where the main stage is gonna be. But so after 6 o'clock, to gain admission into that area, they're $30. And so that is, we did that last year. Got a little, you know, we moved the cheese on people. We think this year people are understanding that we've made these changes and that their admission, it used to be your six or $8 admission, we got you into everything. But now that we're not charging everybody that, we've got to charge more to the few people that are actually going to go to the late night event.
Thank you for leaving that for the children.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And who is headlining this year?
I don't know. Blues travelers.
Blues travelers?
Question for you, Frank.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that the resolution states that, that the city is permitting public consumption of alcoholic beverages. And are you not having a particular vendor?
Oh, we are.
Or is that?
Well, we've always had the open container in, in the, in the, in the boundaries of the event.
Right.
And we are having the Fall Line Brewery out of Macon is gonna be vending on the street.
Okay.
So they're our preferred vendor. They've paid a, they've paid a nice sponsorship fee to have that ability. But our businesses downtown also allow, they can't vend on the street, but we're allowing them to walk out in a plastic cup onto the street. But the, the Fall Line Brew will be the only business allowed to vend on the streets.
Will the cups be designated or?
No, sir.
No.
No, they're just, they're just, the idea is we wanted no glass on, you know, the biggest thing is no glass outside.
Right, I understand the, the plastic end of it, but I just didn't know, you know, just keep anybody from just walking in, you know, driving up and fixing something at the car and coming on in.
Sure, sure.
And that, but, you know, that'd probably be few and far between.
Happens.
It happens.
I've been to a couple of football games with a Ziploc bag, maybe you have too.
Even more elaborate setup.
I was just gonna say the ordinance reads that you guys clear plastic cup when it's open container.
Okay.
At the festival, and that's also what we do for First Friday.
Okay, all right. We had designated some cups though, that, that you've done through the Main Street First Friday type thing. And I didn't know if, if that, that's the reason for my asking the question.
I think that'd be a lot.
Yeah, those were, those were logoed cups and, you know, right now, those are kind of expensive still. So now the businesses have to provide them themselves.
I, I had mentioned to Carly, I'm, I'm a keeper of T-shirts. And I actually have one from 1975, Mother's Finest Concert at George College. And that's been signed by the entire band. And it, it doesn't fit anymore for some reason, but I've probably grown taller. But one thing I wanted to mention to you is that I had mentioned to Carly that I had some T-shirts from past festivals. And I've, I've actually got two Sweetwater T-shirts from.
You'd get sued if you say that loud.
2005 and 2007. But something that maybe none of you know is that I have one from the first festival that was held by Main Street and that was actually in 1991.
Go Festoville.
At Festoville.
Festoville.
Held on the front campus of George College.
Yep.
And I was the liaison for city council for Main Street at that point in time. And, but I still have the T-shirt and it's aqua color and it has the gold columns of the, of the city insignia.
I remember those days well.
Frank, I'm gonna say this just to bug Mr. Chambers. I have T-shirts too for years, but I can't read the lettering on them because I washed them so many times. It sounds like, so who wear, who wear their T-shirts?
I, I wear them just enough to break them in and then they are put up.
Okay, okay. That's how it's gonna be.
The youth zone, is it still the same? Is it 12, 15? How much was it last year? The youth, kids zones?
Oh, they're like 35.
The T-shirts?
No, the kids zone.
Oh, the kids zone. Yeah, it hasn't changed. I think it, well, I don't know it off the top of my head. But I, I believe that they, they, the company said they're gonna keep it the same.
Are they having more things or?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, yeah, yeah. They were, they were real happy with the layout and they're gonna, yeah, yeah, we're gonna bring in, I think, three more, three more items are gonna be coming in too.
Okay. I guess it would be more of a, the chief is not here, security question. Do, when they bring their bags in, are we gonna require clear bags? So they still can bring any kind of bag, that's just more of a security line? You know, people to carry their purses and stuff at a certain time of the day, maybe later in the evening?
I don't think Major Boyer has recommended clear bag policy.
We, we have, last year, we added the, the physical barricades. And that's, but that, that, that was a discussion that our committee has had with Link. It was not one that we felt was either necessary or cost effective at this point. That's, that's a, you know? But we, we, you know, the police had a, I, I felt a good presence last year. A very good, and it was professional and I think it didn't scare, I mean, you know, they walk around with long guns and, but they did it in a very professional manner. And I felt, I felt, people felt safe and I thought they did a great job. And I'll say that there's other events that happen in Milledgeville that are significantly smaller, that have problems. And we're 20 years and we haven't had any issues and we hope to keep it that way. But we, it only happens because we've got great volunteers, we've got great partners with the city. I mean, all your eyes are out there. I know y'all are off, but you're not off. And you'll, you let me know when you see something wrong and everybody does. So, you know, as a community, we're able to pull this off and I'm very grateful to be part of it. I know our committee works really hard and they don't get all the accolades they deserve, but they, they certainly do. And, you know, we couldn't do it without them. We certainly couldn't do it without y'all. So we really appreciate it and I know the community does too.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. All right, so no further discussion. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Matt?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2310-39 by caption.
Resolution to authorize an agreement with Georgia College and State University to partner in an inclusion innovation community research grant to facilitate smart cities, smart city initiatives.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll move second.
Is there any discussion?
Excited about this.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Matt?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. Moving on, we have two alcohol license application and the first wave of the renewals. I will ask the clerk to present the first alcohol license application.
The first is for Armando A. Reyes on behalf of El Tequila Grill Incorporated located 168 Garrett Way. And this is for beer and wine and liquor and Sunday sales consumption on premises.
You have heard the application. Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Aye.
The second application is from Fall Line Brewing Company who was set up again this year at the Deep Roots Festival. I'll ask the clerk to please present the, to please present the application.
This is for Caitlin Crescent on behalf of Fall Line Brewing Company and it is for a beer and wine special events application on-site alcoholic consumption on private property. And it is for the Deep Roots Festival, October the 21st, 2023.
You have heard the application, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Matt?
Aye.
As usual, we do have, I will, I will ask that if there are no objections that we adopt the renewals in Mass. No objection, here are no objections, I will ask the clerk to present the alcohol license renewals that have been vetted and are ready for approval at this time.
Quick Stop 3 located at 2653 North Clement Street for beer and wine packaged to go. Georgia Wine and Spirits LLC doing business as Beverage Depot, 201 Robertson Mill Road for beer, wine, liquor packaged to go. 428 Lake LLC doing business as Tipsy's Liquor, 1887 North Clement Street for beer, wine, liquor catering packaged to go. Blazing Wings Incorporated doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings, 2472 North Clement Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. Prit 711 LLC doing business as Sci Food Mart, 1051 North Jefferson Street for beer and wine packaged to go. MNK LLC doing business as Short Stop, 1660 North Clement Street for beer, wine packaged to go. Donu Shiva LLC doing business as S&R Package Store, 850 South Lane for beer, wine, liquor packaged to go. Golden Pantry Food Store Incorporated doing business as Golden Pantry Store number 96, 204 East Hancock Street for beer, wine packaged to go. BRG Beverages LLC doing business as Chili's Grill and Bar, 2596 North Clement Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. And that concludes the list.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the alcohol license applications as presented in Mass?
Moved, we approved. Second.
Any questions or discussions on any of these renewals? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Matt?
Aye.
Alright, we do have one appointment on the agenda tonight. It's at the recommendation of the Allied Arts Board. I am nominating Andrew Herring for the appointment to the Allied Arts Board of Directors. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
Moved, we approved. Second.
Is there any discussion on the appointment? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Matt?
Aye.
At this time, we need to go into closed session to discuss a personnel matter.
Mayor, I don't think we need a closed session tonight unless you have something.
We did. Or did we change it since the time you and I talked?
You just simply told me there may be one based on evaluation piece that Mr. Jordan is recommending that.
You don't have it, okay.
Tonight.
Okay.
Got Mr. Reynolds' changes that I requested that he look at and we will get it sent out and hopefully he can get the set of meetings, special meeting next week or we can do that at that time. And I'll send you an email, everyone an email.
Okay, okay. Alright, so with that being said, we will not be going into closed session. That concludes the items on the agenda. I do have an announcement that Atrium Health is still having their walks, their monthly walks, and so they're having on the 21st, Come Walk With The Doc. Is it at 9:00 AM? I think it's at 9:00 AM to 10:00 or 11:00 or so. And they're asking that we pass the word for them to get it out so that they can have people to come out and walk with the doctor at their track at Navisum, Atrium. Are there any other announcements, pardon me? October 21st.
Might have some screwed up.
And then on, and then on Saturday, October the, the 14th, St. Paul Baptist Church along with Ms. Stephanie Wright is hosting a Come Walk For The Breast Cancer Awareness starting at 6:00.
Starting at 6:00, setup is at 4:00 PM.
Okay, so set up at 4:00 PM and it starts at 6:00. They'll have food vendors, they'll have different booths set up. So come out and walk for someone that you know is a survivor or is still battling with breast cancer. And this is not just for women, but for men only. I don't know if you all saw what Mr. Reese did and Dr., I can't think of his name now, from Georgia College, they did a really good presentation on Channel 13 in reference to men being aware and their awareness to bring to men for breast cancer. Are there any other announcements or comments?
Madam Mayor, I did have a question about appointments for the Land Bank Authority. I know two weeks ago, we were assigned the task to bring nominations and then we were supposed to meet last week to discuss those nominations. We were unable to have that meeting last week, so I wanted to follow up and see if there had been any additional discussion about appointments or if we were prepared to make any appointments. There is, I, I ask because there is substantial grant money that is on the line and if we do not have a Land Bank Authority formed, there is a risk that those grants may be lost.
We're very much aware of that, thank you for reminding us. Has anyone else thought of anybody else? Did you see the email that Mr. Reynolds sent out? And in his email, as I stated, I wanted everyone to bring somebody to the table. We only have four appointments and we don't need all of the same people, but, you know, I talked about who I thought would make a good appointee, being a lawyer, a banker, someone that has worked hands-on in the housing authority because I think, not so much it's hands-on, but you know about housing authorities and how the land bank uses will benefit people. So have anyone else thought of anybody else that they want to bring to the table?
That, I mean, what does housing authorities have to do with the land bank?
Not necessarily that housing authority has to be one, but I'm asking, has anybody else?
Housing industry.
Housing industry, not, yeah.
So how, anybody else?
Housing authority, but we, we, I do have some, but I'm not ready to divulge that.
You have some?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so Ms. Schinholster has some and she's not ready to talk about hers, not anybody else? No?
I, I had mentioned to you.
Yeah, you had mentioned.
Possibility of Gus Persley, that's been in the construction industry for probably 50 years and close to it anyway and grew up in it. And he's not a builder, so he would not per se be directly involved with trying to bid on property so on and so forth, but would have an interest in it.
I also think as we think about people for, for the land bank, that you need to think about people who, who know of people in the community that would benefit from habitat houses as well as just picking out people that are so out of touch with reality because they've, they, they're, they're, you know, they only deal with a certain group of people in that community. That land bank needs to be made up of people who are from the community that are involved in community issues so that we can make sure that the people that will benefit from those habitat homes will be always in their thoughts and they, that they will be aware of them.
Okay, so, but you're not ready to talk about yours tonight, so we're gonna?
No, I'm not, no, I don't have to divulge it publicly.
So what we are, pardon me?
I don't have to divulge them publicly at this time because we're not making those appointments, but I will, I'll get it to you.
Okay. So what timeframe, as you spoke of, is of the essence, Mr.?
Well, I was, I was hopeful that we might be able to have these appointments before the end of September, but clearly here we are in the second week of COVID. I think it would be tremendously beneficial if we had these appointments ready. If not for a called meeting next week, then certainly at the latest by our next regular meeting.
Has the county made all of their appointments?
Yes, ma'am, they have.
Yeah, they've made.
They made all theirs about a month ago.
Okay. Alright, so we'll, we'll table that and get back to that as soon as everybody's ready to agree because that is something that I asked, that everybody bring somebody to the table that they can do. So if there are no further questions or?
I've got one comment that I forgot to put in my report, Mayor. Just to give you all an update on the mall traffic light, the lights have been installed. We are waiting on power to be run to them now. That's been a little bit of a comedy of errors. Seems that for Georgia power purposes, we have to get an address for one of the poles.
An address?
An address. And so we are working with the county now to get that address and I shared with Mr. Tyson, we could just send the bill to that pole.
A pole address.
And so once electricity is connected, GDOT will be ready to wire them and hopefully we'll at least have flashing lights, maybe by the end of October if we can get the power to them, so.
So what happened to the striping?
We're having the official name for the traffic light.
They, they striped, it's striped up there.
No, I thought they were gonna put the things that.
They, they started working on the striping yesterday.
Yeah, the stripes are, I was up there today and it's, it's striped, the barricades are not up yet, but the striping is there.
We, we were contacted, what, by last Tuesday morning and, and by GDOT and they said the lights will be ready for power by noon. And I went, well, they won't have it by noon. And we have never, we have never as a city initiated the power for a traffic light. The installing contractor always does that and then transfers the account to the city. GDOT is the installing contractor in this situation and they didn't want to do that. So that's the reason this is taking a couple more hoops to jump through, but, but they're coming, they're coming, so.
Entry pocket.
Yep.
It's gonna, it's gonna take some training because I, I noticed this afternoon that because they, they stopped the turning lane right there at the mall entrance. They stopped the, the turning arrows there and then you're, you're not supposed to get back over until you pass by the next mall entrance. But this afternoon, people were shooting up that turning lane all the way to the, to the, to the light, traffic light. So it's, it's gonna take some training before people get accustomed to that.
That's what I thought they were saying, they were gonna put like the, the things out here, GMC, the little.
I think it's only gonna be paint initially.
Mm-mm, mm-mm, mm-mm.
Probably need to put some spikes out.
Ooh.
It's gonna be interesting.
Oh, my goodness.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So what class do we have here with us tonight? Who's your professor and what is your class? Don't be shy.
Everybody know?
Stand up, baby.
Wilkinson.
Oh, Dr. Wilkinson, okay. And that's political science, right? Dr. Wilkinson, okay. Well, we thank you all for coming and being here with us tonight and sharing in on our meeting. You're welcome to get pictures with the city manager or anybody that's willing to take a picture if, if you need it for your class, okay? Say that you were here to get your points. Alright then, if there is no other announcements or comments, is there a motion to adjourn? So move.
Second.
Alright, third, call the roll.